That every decision made would be in accordance with your will and heaven just help us, Lord, on earth to seek and follow you. Lord, we pray for moisture for this dry land and thank you in advance, Lord, for hearing the answer. Lord, we thank you for this area and it's a lighthouse for Texas. Thank you for the way that we receive people and greet them with your love and your grace around this county and in this whole area. Lord, we thank you for the love of the hearts in this room from you and your willingness to follow you in your sentence, Jesus. Lord, I pray for all those that stand on their way day by day, our law enforcement officers, our first responders and others, that you would surround them, Lord, with a hedge of protection, guard their hearts. Lord, thank you for another day you've given us, not our eyes, but faith in you and all that you have for us in this day. Praise you Christ, amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Inaudible) Texas like, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, and say nothing about one nation of this world.
All right, the first thing on the agenda this morning is recognition of amendments to recognize amendments by the February 26, 2018 Potter County Commission. First of all, corrections of amendments, so recognized. Number two, budget amendments to consider and act upon, February 27, amendments for the 27th, and we may be there. Here in the morning.
Just feel how many questions there is.
Carrie, do you have a question on page three, number three? The reclassification of the budget on the camera system and annual amendments is just more than we anticipated.
You know, when we prepared the budget last year, we actually put, um, magnitude, when we put it on, then we just moved it to the top.
Okay. Any questions, sir?
We approve the budget amendments as presented.
Motion?
Certainly.
And a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Bouchers to consider enacted upon approval of the type of vouchers processed by the county sheriff's office for the February 21, 2018, to March 7, 2018. Check numbers 179, 294 through 179526, and wire transfers 1045 through 1050, an amount of $800,599.
I move to approve vouchers, uh, for the checks that are already by the judge, wiring for, uh, 1,000,000 vouchers.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Tax office to consider enacted upon the deed approval for the purchase of shared sale properties. Share the agenda. Good morning.
What piece of property?
What piece of property is it?
We get all our tax really.
These were strikeouts from the share sales. We put myself in, so it's a.
I move to approve the, uh, transfer of deeds, purchases of the shared sale properties.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
And a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Insurance report. Okay. Okay, there are things you could be, you want to talk about? There is not, there is not, and usual, okay. All right, so recognized. Number six, certificate of completion of required hours, recognize the certificate of completion of required hours for treasury and duties for the certified county treasurer and also the public funds investment act. She's on here. Congratulations, sir. Okay, so recognized. Number seven, neighborhood claim to receive a court living report from the President of the City of Amarillo regarding the county's loans contributing to the neighborhood projects.
This is just a court living report, but it's just a decision from our staff.
Judge, only thing I, I can say, we are expecting an agenda item out of that court with AJ, um, valid for the City of Amarillo or adoption, uh, or, or discussion, um, any physical feedback, do that on the side of the table. So we have that as the next agenda.
Okay, so, so recognized. Number eight, budget amendment, Admiral Potter Events, Viny District, to review and approve the proposed amendment to the 2017, 2018 budget, Admiral Potter Events. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you? Good, how are you? My name is Laura stores, I'm the finance director for the city of Amarillo, and I have Terry Wright here with me, he is the president of the Admiral Potter Events, Viny District Board, and we're coming to this commission today to ask for a budget amendment to the 17 to 18 approved budget for the Viny District. The budget amendment would be $420,942, um, increase to the Admiral Tri-State participation line item, and this will, um, help to fund additional improvements at the Admiral National Center, and there are sufficient reserves available to cover this. And then if you have additional questions, um, Mr. Wright, if you have any, happy day.
What are they going to do to it, right? Some plans?
Well, there's a, yes, several items that, uh, they've, uh, added for, uh, to improve the facilities out there, creating from a vacuum trailer to vacuum up the shavings from the stalls that should, uh, usually after an event, it takes about six to eight people to do that temporarily, and this is a two-person piece of equipment, and that does a lot quicker. May I volunteer as a video board for the, uh, Admiral Nationals, uh, it would be a great attention for that.
And Terry, is there any reason that, um, that would occur kind of mid-budget for a budget amendment that it's just not being slated for next budget years? There's something coming up, they're prepping for, trying to get this in by?
The main event is, was the adequate strike. Okay, good.
Just, just, well, Carrie, anything that you can think of that we would be concerned about, Nancy?
Well, what it is, did, we ended up on balance, probably 3%, but if they're comfortable with it, then they still have to be.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to the 2017, 18 budget of the Admiral Potter Events, Viny District.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Thank you.
So I added, uh, there's a lot of interest up in other cities that are going to add because we keep it, we keep it in Amarillo, it's great.
Number nine, United Way, do your presentation for the 2018 campaign.
Judge, I'll introduce David, who's actually going to be speaking to us, but this will be, uh, and you'll come, please go ahead and come forward, but, uh, I thought this was just as a placeholder, I do know we have, uh, been a donor for United Way for quite some time, they're finishing up and wrapping up the campaign, I thought this would be a good placeholder for him to share a few things with us, and David, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for inviting me here today, I appreciate that. My name is David Branson, I'm a super total, uh, I volunteer in United Way, this, uh, campaign, I sit on the, uh, business council as well as multiple, uh, board directors for organizations throughout the United Way. And, uh, are you the lead person?
Oh.
Uh, just want to talk to you real quick about the United Way and, and the needs. I know that, uh, you guys are, are part of the leaders of, of our, our campaign, and Amarillo, um, true group, aware of other needs that are, are being met on a yearly basis for United Way, uh, you know, this year, I know that, uh, our great city was highlighted with, uh, homeless issues and stuff like that, but we, we addressed the best manner we felt that, uh, we could, but the other side of it is, is the homeless and the children. Another thing, that's something that's on my rise, that's something that, that, uh, has really touched my heart. This year, uh, the last, the last period that we had, we had a little over 2,258 homeless children. And that's something that I just don't see that's acceptable in the community that we live in, and we, again, that we take pride in, and that the thing is, is that United Way has come up over the last couple of years, a system in order to help ease that suffering, and not only in the short-term sense where we're helping out those kids immediately with programs, but in a long-term sense too, with educational programs in order to ease the suffering down the road, not, you know, one of those things where you're not just facing it upstream or facing it downstream, so that hopefully in years to come, we'll see that number reduce instead of rise. And that's something that, that when I started volunteering, they, they wanted those things, they said, well, you're why, why are you here, why are you wanting to do this outcome? And that's what they have truly touched me over the years, is, is the needs in our community, especially our, our future, I mean, these are, these are our kids that our kids go to school with, our grandkids go to school with, and this is something that we, we don't address and fix, it's going to be something that they're going to be passing on to. This little thing that they call generational poverty, and just a little quick sip on that, it's one of those things where you're just feel hopeless. I'm sure you, you've all had the situation where there'd be a passing of someone, or someone close, or instant or accident, you feel that hopelessness, like there's nothing you can do that can be done without it, and that's something that was explained to me, and I didn't realize that in the general sense, but that generational poverty is just hopeless, because there's no reason to try, it's like you give up, because you, your parents before, your parents before that was poor, you never knew anything but being in that situation, so there's no way to look up, and United Way is trying to find a way to address those needs, to show that people, there is a hope, there is a way to get an education, there is a way to get a job, you're not stuck in those situations. So, that being said, uh, on these forms here, there's a way to contribute, guys, in United Way, contribute to this cause, uh, there are, if you look in the middle section there, uh, there is, uh, place for a leadership giver. Leadership giver, someone who, uh, donates or contributes at least a thousand dollars a year, you're recognized, and you're at our banquet, and, uh, you're across the street at the Civic Center, uh, literature throughout the year. Leadership giving is, is about, you know, maybe about nineteen dollars a week, uh, to , to help United Way and United Way of Admiral Canyon, which is something else I would like to point out too, because it is our United Way, it is, people are donating, it's right here, uh, just right at ninety-nine cents of every dollar that's donated, reflected through our community, stays in our community, goes right back out, operating funds on that as well, is one of the states lowest, and it's actually eighty-six percent of that dollars, or about eighty-six cents of that dollar, literally goes right back out to people, and the other, the other sixty, or was it thirteen percent there, is, you know, for salaries, and the funds of cost materials, costs and stuff like that, so, and it runs really efficient because of the great people who are giving, you know, back in and volunteering. So, that being said, also there is another, another program there, uh, that Happy State Bank has partnered with, and it's called the Step Up Program, that's $750 a year, uh, that's about, sounds about fourteen dollars a week, but Happy State Bank donates that over $250 on their behalf to make the leadership give a thousand dollars. So, that being said, guys, I won't take up much of your time, if you could, uh, fill those out, uh, look and, look and see what you can do, what you'd like to do, how big a part you would like to, you know, do, and this also, I always build this out there too, where it's not just money, you need to go, you need to volunteer, and people, it's an opportunity to get back as well, so, if any of those things are interested there, uh, I'll hand around another ten minutes or so, and then, uh, come back around and put the ones that you filled out. Appreciate it, thank you for your time.
David, a quick question, if I may, so on this form, you mentioned, um, the leadership giver, and, and I would encourage you maybe to even share some with our audience, made of the majority of other elected officials and, um, leaders in our, our county, but the leadership giving, the box in the middle, where, which one is that? Like, I just want to check it, it is right here. Um, but I thought it was a part down here, there's a few little ducts there.
Yes, on the middle there, it's, it's basically, there, the fair share, the super fair shares in the middle, uh, the leadership giver is a box here.
It's just that one in there?
It's just that box there, and then at the bottom, you know, obviously there's lots of things that you can do here to give out more, but then you can just put, check that box and do a thousand dollars total down here, or step fifty, or you can do the step up program, uh, that's a box there as well.
And then we just give you the forms and you get them to our HR, or payroll department, and I'm looking at.
Yes, and that would be?
Yeah, okay, that's okay, and, but.
It's, it's okay, we'll separate that, give those back to that, and we'll take a form to United Way, and then what they do is every pay period or monthly, or however you want to do it, you just scan the response, send that over to, uh, overseas, and if there's anyone else in the room, do I?
Yeah, just go ahead.
There, I'll catch you.
If anybody, while you're asking those out, uh, we could just define the area of coverage, to just speaking of as far as the, the 300T, is it just Admiral Canyon here, or is it the 26 counties that?
It's just Potter County, it's who, this United Way, those United Way funds represent that are a, of, and, so it's part of Landville County. And on my point as well, obviously, uh, Potter County is the one with bigger needs as far as, I think last year, we helped, uh, just a little more 21,000 people, and out of those 21,000 people, it was like seventy percent Potter County. I'll just walk around the office, if you'd like one.
Okay, number 10, employee status change, to consider enacted upon change of employee status from temporary to regular part-time, February 12 through 18, benefits are budgeted.
This is for a lady that we currently have employed in our office, and she is currently back scanning, um, documentation into our case management system in order for us to find documents, so we kind of got our wires crossed and didn't realize that we needed to do this sooner rather than later in order to get benefits, and so, that's what we're trying to do, so we can keep her on. Um, it's a job that will end at some point, and she knows that, that we're trying to get ahead, because we get daily requests from customers and, um, law enforcement for, uh, debt and appropriations, those kind of things, so it's easier to have it in the system than have to pull the file, because the working force are really experienced in the country.
So, Julie, the, um, temporary to regular part-time, what are the benefits that we're trying to make sure that she doesn't lose, I missed?
Oh, I'm sorry, right now she doesn't have any benefits. So she was, so she's going to get, um, she'll get, help me, is it retirement insurance?
She'll get, no, she won't get, um, insurance unless she hits that thirty hours.
Oh, okay.
Uh, unless she averages the thirty hours under healthcare reform, but she will be entitled to, uh, vacations if leaving and sending.
Well, but she is working over thirty hours.
And if, if she, so we're going to go ahead and move her then to full time? Well, that's wrong with the, okay, with the health insurance, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And then health insurance, because she is averaging her thirty hours.
And that's a budgetary benefit, right, so that's going to add to your?
No, we have, we have a budget, funds of budget.
But the new position?
It's not a new position, that we're just adding to that position, and so I have funds within my, uh, within my current. It's not that that position was budgeted for insurance, but she has the available budget, they have, apparently they have, we have to pay her insurance, so when it is available.
So what happens if that employee decides they want her insurance, they have budget next year, you can't do that. Uh, and then at budget time next year, I almost feel like it's a, a harder decision at budget time this next year to say, sorry, we couldn't fund you that time, you know, when they, once they're moved up, they're moved up, I feel like.
She probably won't be here, I mean, it's just, it's a job that's getting, and like I said, she knows that, that she is doing, you know, she's currently putting her on the long end, so we're going to give that, the forecast, probably in the summer.
So is there a reason for this change, is it so close that she may end?
Because we were of the understanding that once she was here, that she had to be there a year for all this to change, and then you found out that her aunt was on the same class, so that's.
Okay, according to our policy procedure manual, the definition of temporary employee means a new employee works full-time, but who works less than six months per year, so consequently, we couldn't keep her, or can't keep her as a temporary employee that six months would be gone, and so we have to make a change.
Okay, okay. Yeah. So, it's my fault, yeah.
That's what Karen said, it's only, only that she is, uh, satisfied now, that you don't anticipate that it will rise again, or is it something that, uh, that, uh, it may eventually surface again?
I mean, I don't think it could, but I, I mean, I don't know the future, but certainly, I'm, I'm sorry. No, I mean, we're, we're trying to, and we've even changed up some of our processes, and so where she was able to do maybe thirty files a day, she's able to do sixty in the morning, sixty, and so we've basically double timed what we're doing, so there, there is an end to this project.
So you thought you could keep her a year, you found out it was like six months, so you have to make a change to kind of keep her on the roll, right?
Yeah, well, we realized that some of ours, we just need to double scan certain documents in order to, to give the system.
Okay.
I move to, um, approve the change in employee status from temporary to regular part-time effective, March 12 through 2018, and benefits are followed, please. Certainly.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, five to zero, thank you. Number 11, Family Support Services fundraiser to discuss and consider for approval, I request the Family Support Services to host an Over the Edge rappelling fundraiser event at the Santa Fe Building in cooperation with the Bigfoot Order, Over the Edge USA, and Joey Campbell here, also Jim Lloyd, he's here, he's been here for twenty. Any questions?
I'll get a question.
I am Joey Campbell, and I'm chief development officer at Family Support Services, primary, um, John Sturazeman, uh, to keep our agency going, um, we want to thank you for considering our request, because we know it's going to help us serve thousands of people each year. Um, we serve veterans, we serve victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, um, people with non-health issues, babies at risk for abuse, children who need mentors, uh, teens at risk for suicide, right now we serve 25,000 people a year, 25,000, and of those, more than half reside in Potter County. Um, we have a long history of working with Potter County, we trace our roots back to 1908, and, um, have provided many, many services, and also, flatter, when you guys on at least one thing, it's our battery intervention and prevention program, where we work with community supervision for people on probation or parole for, uh, domestic violence incidents, and is to keep them from recommitting. We are a private nonprofit, and we raise money a lot in different places, we have state and federal grants, we have private foundations, we are a United Way program provider, um, we do get donations from the public, uh, and until this year, we've always had two fundraisers, the Mardi Gras party and the Harley party, and these have filled all the gaps in funding, but this year we lost some money, we lost over $50,000 from the United Way, uh, last year when they did not meet goal.
Which is why the donations matter.
Yeah, which, for those donations are real important. Um, we also have pretty much doubled the, the occupancy of our domestic violence shelter safe house, because of a new concept that we're using to really get people back on their feet and out of violence, but we didn't need any extra funding to do that, so we've had some gaps. So we have made a difficult decision to add a third fundraiser, and we needed something different, because you can only go to the same people a certain number of times and ask them for money, and after a lot of research, we've been working on this six months, we, um, partnered, or decided to partner with a company called Over the Edge, and it's pretty much exactly what it sounds like, people raise money, individuals raise money for a charity to get the opportunity to go over the edge of the tall building, and they pay, they, they collect a lot of money for this, uh, typically these events net over a hundred thousand dollars in that money. Um, Over the Edge has been around for a long time, uh, since 2004, they hosted 716 events at 326 buildings internationally, with over 52,000 participants, um, they do gross over 117,000 per event, and the Over the Edge events have raised over $71 million for nonprofits. This is different, because we don't have to sell tickets, we don't rely on sponsorships, we rely on people who are mission oriented and care about us, and are willing to go out and raise money to do this, their hurt is if they get to go, they get to rappel. Um, we're hoping that the building in Amarillo that we do our event at in August will be the Santa Fe. It's the perfect size, it's already been checked out twice from the air, and we should have walked it on the roof, and sending pictures, the next step is that they would send someone here to vet the building, they are very, very, very cautious, they don't just say, yeah, pick the building, we'll do it, they say, no, three or four, five times, and then you can do it. Um, if we can do this event, we'll handle the recruitment, getting people to do it, uh, we handle publicity awareness, um, helping the participants get the money together, Over the Edge does all the technical stuff, they bring in experts, people with certifications, all the equipment, which is tested and double-tested and triple-tested, they, they bring a whole staff of people here to help us run the event. What we ask you to do is provide the building, provide access to the building, uh, it's a two-day period, August 15th and 16th, we create as little, um, obstruction of your work as possible, we don't ask you to shut the building on our behalf, we had talked to Mr. Fowler and Judge, and, um, the building is pretty for building safety, and felt like there were ways, some doors we could use, and elevators we could use that would not disrupt the work of.
Joey, can I ask a quick question? Why would you vet, um, the Santa Fe building as opposed to the Chase, the tallest building?
It's too tall.
Okay.
There's a maximum of twenty sports.
Okay.
You want it to be more than five, less than twenty. Also, there's some buildings in, uh, I gave them a whole list of buildings, and most of them had a problem from the air. Just, I'm just, Santa Fe was always my favorite, because I looked at it every day across from my, my office, and I think it's one of the prettiest buildings we have, and I think it makes a real good picture, I'm a, I'm a graphics person, and so, but to find that it also was the same choice, maybe for a little bit.
What about since it's a historic building, and, and I, I don't know the technical piece, but I'm imagining they're happy to, to, to put the harnesses, some, or stake them in the ground, if you will, I'll tell you, nothing we do in that building is cheap, so those are the things that I have to, if I'm.
And I'll get to those, the issues of insurance, um, they would not do it if they had to damage the building to do it. They would tell us no, because they don't want their insurance to have to pay money. That, that's part of their issue of being very, very cautious. Um, safety, obviously, is the number one concern, they do take out a $10 million policy for every event, we're, we're a named insured, you're a named insured, they are, um, they show us their loss runs, and they actually don't have clients, they don't need the insurance typically, but they have. They don't need the insurance typically, but they have it. They do ask all participants to sign a waiver. And I've looked at it, and it's just like we do from the Harley Party. Every vendor, every volunteer, every guest signs a waiver, holding everyone harmless. The fact is, if we're negligent, if, if, if Over the Edge does something negligent, they are not helped by us. We, we've not had that problem with the Harley Party, and they've not had that problem with their events here. But they do require a waiver. The waivers bells out, and there's a copy in your packet, that this is an event that does have some risks to it. Nothing has zero risk. Gosh, I fell off my daughter's porch just to make a Steven go and landed on the con, lovely. But, but it's saying that we're taking all caution we can, but if you have a heart attack in line, you really know that's where the harm, the harm comes out of it. And that's why it's structured, man. I trust Santa Fe building because it's just like us, it has a long tradition. We have a long tradition. We've been here since the beginning, pretty much. And we want to work with people who have that same sense of history and tradition. We're asking you to share your building with us for two days in August. We'll leave it the way we found it, we'll take good care of it, you'll get a lot of public awareness in a very positive light. And then we'll make some money so we can serve the people. Thanks for considering it, and we hope you'll agree with us and mark your calendars for August fifteenth and sixteenth.
And just for the, just for the record, in the meeting that we did have Mike was also present.
You all have a meeting?
Yeah, we've had a meeting about six weeks ago.
Okay.
And it was Ted and Scott, you and Mike and, is anybody else, is anybody from Sheriff's Office there? But we did discuss it at length, and Mike was fine with it, yes.
Really? I can treat you.
But it was okay. Again, then we got the waiver from the people that were doing the business, and people that paid in Canada. And that's where we have a question. Ted, Ted ready to work and, and. If you want to address that, Ted, feel free. If you don't want to, that's fine.
I included the waiver anticipating questions about exposure, so that's why I see the packet. It's got a lot of lawyer stuff in it, and I do need to correct one thing. The waiver does release Over the Edge from protect Over the Edge employees, including coverage for passage for active negligence. On the court of Over the Edge.
Here's the important question, is the waiver, is someone, if H.R. Kelly's going to jump off the building and he signs this waiver and it doesn't make it, who's, who's responsible for that? I mean, is it the county? Is it going to be? I mean, I mean, seriously, so who, who, if something should happen, who's responsible? Who's it fall back on if it's not Over the Edge?
All those eyes shaded very well to me that H.R. would be liable responsible, but in the end, it's the county facility. And.
Well, the waiver, the waiver applies to the county too, so it protects the county. It protects Family Support Services, and it protects Over the Edge corporate. So this being, in effect, the county is sponsoring this event. And the court just needs to know that, and this is nothing unusual about this, these participants will decide a full, complete release of their rights to make any claims against anybody in respect to an event in which the county essentially goes across. I don't impound that, but doesn't mean that I am in any way, shape, form, fashion against this.
But Ted, do you think, do you feel like that's I've been trying, struggling with the right word, good governance, I guess, is, so let's say something catastrophic, like that we just have to plan and those things that do happen, something very tragic happens. And I'm excited, and I've been the big fundraiser, and I raised twenty grand for Family Support Services. I give to you guys for doing, and I'm the one that goes over the edge. And I sign it, this little two-page, which unfortunately, I feel like we live in a world where people sign and initial and say go. I mean, I think of even home alarm system, cellphone bill, you just sign and accept and go. I'm not saying that's right, I just feel like that's a little bit of our culture now. Someone does go over, and it's, here comes family. And I can afford funeral expenses, and I can afford all those things. Well, guess who's going to get the first call? I feel like it's Judge Hannah. Well, we're at the Santa Fe building, and in my mind, the fact that Potter County's name is somehow tied to it, it implies that Potter County is then kind of responsible. I know on paper we're not, right, even released, but is that, is that good governance to let someone go over to know that there is no opportunity for them to secure any type of claim?
Well, that's, that's the participant's choice. The best is.
And they will have raised at least a thousand dollars to give that choice.
So I get, so the more I raise, the better chance I get to not null the claim.
Yeah, I'm just saying that they made a conscious decision to raise the money and slap a waiver.
Yeah.
I have a question. Over the Edge, what percent of profits could they get out of?
Ten percent. We paid a fairly small buy-in fee, which we get back if we don't have to do the event, but then we'll pay ten percent.
Would you comfortable with that?
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I, I live in the building down town if you want me to, it's a, it's a pretty cool event. I'd have participated.
There's no claims, you know, we all get all our debt.
I just want, I simply wanted the court to be aware that Potter County citizens will be signing very comprehensive waiver claims. Again, as any claims against the county, Over the Edge, Over the Edge Incorporated, and its insurance claim. It's very comprehensive, Texas courts can force these claims. That doesn't mean it shouldn't be done, it's, it's just for court's information, and it's up to the individual to decide.
And I think I'd feel a little different if we knew that there could be a claim opportunity for even Over the Edge that carries this big light and this big ten million policy.
But they told me, and it's, it's a little different than what like Mr. Fowler said. They told me that if there was some negligence, that that insurance could, that there could be claims. Even though there's a whole harmless, and I think that's how we want to talk about Harley Party today, is three thousand people.
I, I, I'm excited, this is a great thing, and I, I think it would be really cool for this city. You know, we just, unfortunately, things happen, and I think about things that get homers that happen. And, and those, those things that really do happen, and I don't know that I'm personally comfortable letting someone go over.
And we have the same concern for safety because we don't want our name ruined.
Right.
Which is why we've spent six months getting to this point and studying their history and loss record and what they've done. I mean, we would not come before you if we had, if we felt like we were in, we're in our reputation, which we would. Mike, you still okay with that?
Just to ask everybody to understand the weather, they have big problems, but we ended up getting around that building. We've discussed that, you know, they can move from side to side around the building.
Any other questions?
That's a good, that's a good point. I like that he brought back wind, how wind shields the changes, you know, the time of the day, so is there any?
They always have contingency plans, yes. And we were gonna originally do it in June, we were more concerned about rain, we were more hopeful for rain than typically in the harvest.
I guess what I'm saying also, is there, is there a level, there are ceiling, or is there a level four, I'd say the wind, twenty-five out now.
And I think it's in your packet. They do have some protocols for when they can go and when they can't go. Normally, within a day, they can still go at some point, but they do check it. And if for some reason we lost our whole day, it could be rescheduled, but they haven't had to do that.
And no protect until.
Yeah, how many people do you anticipate doing? Seventy-six. Seventy-six people. That's how many can do it from this building. And last year, they did it on what building? They haven't done it for a couple of years, and it was at the Eagle Center where Hershey and the Bank is. Which is a fine building. It, it's just not as, I mean, this building has some history and traditions.
Why were the dates picked to Thursday and Friday?
It's Wednesday set up at thirty, Thursday, right? On Wednesday, they are there to test everything and double test, and there's usually a reception that evening for the participants and, and early. And then we get up the next morning and people start rappelling.
So I guess I'll go off of A P D and just also the traffic control and all those things.
If the street has to be blocked, we have to get permission. Typically, we use off, at the Harley Party, we use off the A P D because it's a city street. If there's an opportunity off the Potter County, we would certainly do that.
There's opportunity, I'm sure.
Mr. Coffey, would you like to address that?
I just asked about security. Would you be a conservative for security? Would you guys have security at these events? Is there a need to have security at this event?
We usually have security at all of our events. Even the Marty Bra Party at the City Center, it's free time.
Judge, if I could say this, John, one thing that we talked about was the same thing, of as fast as you can, how to get into a building, we'll use the same route, everything like that, bringing it on.
And then hold them in the ticket office and then take them up on the fourth elevator. Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Other than these are business days, and something, there's going to be some back.
Typically downtown, on the weekend, wouldn't get the attention. That's why they suggested a weekday, just so that people will, will want to see the event.
Okay. Very nice.
My concern was the building.
About two.
We missed doing them, took pictures, sent to their engineers, so we felt comfortable with protecting everything.
And Judge, my concern is still resting, letting someone go over without a true opportunity for a claim. I just, I'm, I'm very.
I like my mountains too.
Yeah, but they don't do that on Potter County property, right?
We need to go ahead and approve this today.
I move to be approved, allow Over the Edge, a public fundraiser, in at the Santa Fe building.
I'll, I'll.
Second. I have a motion in a second on favor. All first, number one.
And I would say, Judge to Joette and Jim, I so appreciate the work families have done, services does, just finding those as a legitimate safety concern, with the lack.
All right, number twelve, Motorola change order approval to consider for approval, Motorola change order for acquisition of additional subscriber units or some other radios, funds available within Motorola project. Sure.
Yeah, this is just, there's some radios that were oversotted and some that weren't informed of the, that they needed until after the project was already started. So it's just to cover those additional radios, and the funds are there, we have all of those there, so it's not going to change the funding, but.
Okay. Who are the additional radios for, Judge, for, I'm sorry, sure.
Forum for the constabulary, twelve for the military, seven for the veterans, three for the independent armed healthcare individuals, two more for the county attorney's vehicles, one for the rich bases.
And what's the total change order on that?
David, I also think that.
He has the money already. Oh, great.
I can motion approve. I, I'm going to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, the motion, second on favor. Obviously, thanks, Judge. Sure, does anybody have any of the, any other questions or ones going on right now?
Can you, if I could ask if you wouldn't mind being our spokesperson if anyone wants to enter office with you, would that be appropriate?
All right, number thirteen, TASER training policy to discuss and consider for approval. A proposed resolution regarding annual recertification requirements for county employee low-enforced emitters equipped with county own TASER units. Sure.
You put my name on it, I don't know why.
I didn't put my name on it.
Well, that's already, that already makes me nervous, because neither one of you wants to talk about it. Thank you, David.
Okay, so, so explain this to us, everyone in the room. Whoever uses TASERS has to be trained every year to, or recertified every year.
The question came both of the TASER representatives a couple of weeks ago, about the recertification. So I received a phone call on that, and based on impressions you gave to Ted. TASER in your nation requires you to get recertified every year. But that is only because they will not come and support you in court if you're pursued. So that is the only requirement, it's not required by state law or by the rules of people. That is just a TASER policy, that they will not come back and support you or testify for this, just like when their TASER is in the U.S. So that's what this.
It did not recertify on hand, it was a problem.
And it did not require, they require you to be recertified each year. It feels like an eight-hour class, initially, and then it's a four-hour class every year. You have to fire up these two cartridges for their policy to, that they'll be able to come and stand up by what we saw.
Did they do the training?
No, we have, we have uncertified instructors that go and learn to make that training. So we have several. I think I've got six or seven that are trained. They do the training, but that's enough. That those that are doing the training are requiring to also get, get TASER. It used to be that you did have to get.
They have, they have changed that.
I think most of them are, are persuaded to do it, but no, we don't require them to do it. Our TASER.
I have a TASER. I like it arranged if you want. I've been TASER, I'm going to be shot than TASER.
No, I think, I think it's kind of like, their theory is, is like with the pepper spray. They want you to experience that, knowing that you can still operate, so that's why I never carry one.
How, how many people are we looking to get through this recertification? I'm thinking.
I have eighty-seven deputies, and they have all been certified and recertified.
Already?
Other than the TASER, do you really see a need to have recertification every year?
That's just what TASER is.
Well, my thoughts on their recertification, we pop two cartridges, so four hundred thousand officers in the United States use TASERS. And they have to recertify every year at two cartridges at thirty dollars or twenty-five dollars a cartridge. She keeps making money. But I mean, I can understand that's their deal, but, and we're.
It's, it's the eligibility thing, I agree, David.
But what are they going to do for us if we had a issue?
They will show up in court and testify.
What are they going to do? What are they going to say? Were they there at the time the incident happened?
We use our.
Is it a need for us to have this?
We use our expired cartridges that we use for each year for the ones that we recertify with. Plus, they can also sell the train, which is a lot less.
Well, this wasn't going on with us at the department. We had to recertify. I never recertified, but at one time.
That was how many years ago, sir? I didn't know that changes.
Before you do that, I would make the, the service thoughts on that, as far as your, your professional personal experience, do you feel that is unnecessary?
So usually, the time, just like you're saying about jumping over the edge on the town. It's just another lot of bleeding in terms of that. And we've done it ever since we started training. We've incorporated some new training. Technically, all you gotta do is both read the PowerPoint, fire two cartridges, and you're done. This year, we actually incorporated into some scenario training where we had to decide whether we could use that or use we. And so we did the training, and it was a four-hour training. So we went in with two different people. One had been using the legal course, the other one was using the last. So the training was something new this year, especially for the community. We had lots and lots of agencies that made clear to see what were the question of new training. Like, more realistic than just one, and cheap.
Also, Sheriff, you're saying this is a requirement to utilize this vendor, too, correct?
It's not so much that you can, you can buy them, you can buy them and use them. It's just they're, that's, they're not going to come back and support you if you're using that somewhere. We've had lots of those, and it's not so much from the TASERS, it's usually them decided to layer in with overdoses of drugs that they're on. Still, they will come and support you if they have any, if they ever had any of that. As far as I've read, they never had any of that.
So Sheriff, what about other people countywide, like outside of the eighty-seven deputies? Because I'm assuming that we're saying this is a great liability protection, if you will. How many other people in the county carry TASERS? Are we looking at sixty more, ten more, outside of the eighty-seven deputies? Anyone else? Like, I think the constables, Bailey, I don't know who else carries.
Three out of the four constables, where are the three constables carrying TASERS? DeValle took his off because his back issues. It's just one less thing, he has something built or his back.
So does anyone else outside the constables use TASERS, carry them?
I don't know if investigators in the DA or county.
Okay.
So it sounds like we're in reality, you're like, you're.
For the constables, if you guys, if they chose to do the training, do you, you would provide the training for them as well, since we have teachers here locally?
You know, we, I, we send the letters home, like on Thursday, and they can do one, and we would offer any kind of.
And, and we do, we get a training list from their, their office every month if we don't participate, it's something that's going on.
I've got to take advantage of it then, right?
So if we do this, if we prove this today, they, everyone has to be certified, recertified?
Yeah, this is, this is what's happening. Ted came up with this because it is a concern of the county, because it's important, it's a lot of. Now, that's a decision, a decision that they're, they're elected, it's just why they want to be certified.
So is there a problem? We just make it like an internal policy like that, Sheriff? But once we adopt this resolution, this becomes part of our budget every year. And so it's like, well, here's however much we need to spend on. Yeah, you're probably using it in your line item to provide this from, the training. Yeah. So I would imagine if the constables are going to come back and you can take advantage of this training before saying this is a county-wide kind of policy, they would be saying we need a little more money to pay for these cartridges or whatever much they pay.
Twenty bucks or thirty bucks.
Okay, so sixty bucks, which is very minimal, I mean, we're talking about three people. But I don't know, do we need to go to this extent of a resolution?
I'm not going to turn into a rap.
Yeah, and that's what you were asking.
Well, that just may take the issue to the more deeper, in some form. The sheriff sees the, the, the training as a lawyer identity. In the event of a catastrophic injury or death, using TASER under guy, then the lawsuit. I would much rather say that we're all current in the training, whether we did it really.
Sixty dollars and four hours of.
It seems like our weapons, we're required, we're required to, to use our weapons only once a year, but we do it. And that's with our pistols and our rifles and when we're stuck, and those are all four hundred bucks.
It says we have three of the four constables, do you all have a minute going there?
Um, I agree with the sheriff, it is something, it's, TASER put that out to protect their products and whichever, which we understand. We do carry it as a tool, the rest was their use force. However, we already have that in play, we do get certified. They do offer the training, which will, you know, reduce some of their training. However, that, we're just one in our office. And we come from a law enforcement background, and we understand, um, the liability on it. Like I said, it's, it's just a tool. We do not have a policy like the sheriff, because we don't have deputies as a brand name. Nor does the reserves use this, it's all, even if I might hit at all times. But our question is this also, just like with, if this is going to go, policy law that this is going to happen, how about the ammo for the, for ourselves, too, as a constable? We don't, we buy, I buy personally, but if it's going to get aligned out of, can we get aligned out with ammo cartridges? I mean, that's, that's what it is. Now, T-CLO does regulate the firearms, but they will not regulate the TASERS. And I'm speaking to our T-CLO rep, when I call them, it's just not regulated yet. Now, the firearm is, because it's a desert force, and it can be used as a, as a use of force. And the liability is always, anything we do is law enforcement officer, there's going to be a liability. But however, we, again, building offices of constables and that, you know, the county's not used to that. We're ahead of the game, we already have that, we get qualified most of the year, TASER in, firearm. And the sheriff does have some type of scenario training, we go through AC, which we do a live fire on a dummy. They put this dummy suit in a line and shoot it, and whichever, it's pretty cool, it's fun. But just, just hearing from the constables, and I'm speaking for the, the other two, sorry. Yeah, DeValle doesn't use it, he's old school, he, that's his verbal judo and command practice type deal. So, you know, he, everybody's different in how they use this type of tools around our, our way. So, um, this is something.
It's beyond my concern.
No, ma'am.
And, and we're going to get, the recertifying the TASER, I didn't know that they'd even changed it to a year, because at the PD, we never did it every year. And at my college, when I was there, we never did it every year. Yeah, well, we're, we're, we got it taken care of, the recertifying. We'll be in compliance with that.
So, um, I move for approval. Old revolution regarding annuals recertification requirements for county.
If y'all move for this, for, well, you know, move ahead on this, who's going to take the, who's going to be in charge of regulating if we do qualify or recert?
Says it goes to county judge upon request. Only upon request.
Here you go.
And this, and this underscore is county law and law enforcement officers.
With county issued TASERS, you know, TASERS.
So, we're just going, I move for approval of the old evolution regarding annual recertification requirements for county employed law enforcement officers equipped with county-owned TASER units.
I have a motion and a second on favor. Number fourteen, equipment repair replacement to consider next bump replacing or repairing folder in C or P S matter. Our county number two-one-eight-five, we're taking the budget transfer from the equipment repair replacement account to treasurer's non-capital account.
There has been some changes since this, this item has been put on the agenda. Carrie and I were talking about possibly with Lea, and Lea is not here today, but doing this through some software, not doing it through a printed form, doing some kind of notification with the employees. So Carrie has all the information, she's been using with IT, is that correct?
Actually, Ginger has, but yes, we've been in touch with Jen's, IT, HR, treasurer's purchasing. And this is specifically for direct deposit notifications. Is the only thing this specific regulations for, and we, it should be if you do it in an electronic or you have to do it for employees.
Think you will need this piece of equipment any longer?
We'll need it one, maybe two more runs. And we're hoping that as we're going together, one of us is three of those, but it's a hundred dollar software purchase.
When I talked to Carrie, I said, what happens if we do need to repair it? She said, we don't have to get approval on that. This, this agenda item was, I was hoping to replace the return unit. And now there is a possibility, if what we're working on, that we can probably get a local vendor to help get some on it so we can get this. I think we're looking at a free version right now, and then later on, yeah, to test. And then I believe Carrie gives you say five hundred dollars to make a purchase of the software. So we pass on this equipment for now, is that right?
So it's about time, huh? That we did it, but, but.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Of course, you want to use an email, because, um, Senator DeValle, the boys don't have county events, we'll personally mail, we'll be.
We have the option, if you're going to stop having email, we could bring it up to, to me, and we're just going to set the level of stuff.
I thought it was down entirely, it might, why do you have employees not have computers? I'm just curious.
They have computers, but on the state side, it's just a state computer, it's not county. So they don't get any emails. When we get countywide emails, that actually, employees will come off. We should be able to make some accommodations for that nineteen, would we not? We can, we can set up a background desktop, a county desktop to let them toggle back and forth on a PC, would we not be able to do something like that? Yeah, we can, we have a PC where we log in our mail and stuff that my supervisors, um, maybe get their email from. I don't have all of my RTS books.
Well, at the very least, we can sort of.
This man has one computer that was in the office and is killing, uh, about his boys' computers. And I would now get everything came in, go down on that computer, if it would be okay for, to show them the amount of, of what are we talking about? It would be just like their, like, watching those. And it would be sent in, and you'd make this person have to walk into their own location. Oh, we don't have it every.
We could do that, yeah, that wouldn't be a problem. And I also want to add, too, we get talks with facilities, because I think they have a lot of grounds, people, things like that, want to have access, but then they have a computer. Okay. So it is confidential to each individual.
Of course, we don't mean taking the action on this one. Okay, number fifteen, equipment upgrade to consider next bump replacing existing black and white copy with a color copy in the county.
Julie and Stephanie approached the purchasing department about replacing their current, it's ready to be replaced, Diddy leg, color copy, I mean, a black and white to a color, based on the fact of their images. Julie and Stephanie, that's timed in, but right now, we're currently buying stock and getting that printed, they, I mean, it's all.
Well, no, and, and again, it's just with the new case management system, we're able to actually print off. You know, we provide the public copies of stuff, and it wouldn't be just for just a regular copy. These are like official letters that they have to take to the bank to do business, whatever's letters, testimony, those kind of things, citations. So it just looks a little more official. We don't buy, we haven't bought letterhead in a long time. And then we also provided you just our cost savings that we, you know, that we saved on copies, we'll give a past year on that. So I know there's a concern about colored copyers in the county, I'm not really sure why. But this is the reason that we want to do it, is so that we can provide a little more professional company, not have to, have to find a letterhead.
Are you taking first over the type of paper at all?
No, it's just, it's just real paper, but it is something a little more official, whatever their type, I think it is.
Does look a little.
A little more official when it's in color.
Yeah, but the cost per copy is a little bit more because it's the toner, but I think in a business, it would be recommended, it does look more official. I think the concern with color has always been that it's not abused, right? I mean, I think your role is a little different, and the documents that you're producing are a little different. But I feel like that's been some of the hesitancy around it.
I'll make motion to replace the existing black and white copy, color copy.
Second. I have a motion and a second on favor. Five zero, thank you very much. Number sixteen, group health insurance formal proposal number one-one-five, designation on page to receive a report on the insurance committee and to discuss and consider or prefer recommendation of a committee given award of contract for health insurance consultant.
On March the fifth, the insurance advisory committee met and discussed the RFP that had been sent out for insurance consultant. And that committee had, each member had independently scored each RFP response, and that response was calculated, you'd have in your packet, a copy of that calculation that was provided by purchasing. We did have five strong RFP responses, and like I say, each was evaluated by our committee members. You'll see from the response that Holmes Murphy came out on top. They were the one that most closely aligned to the needs addressed in our RFP and also cost-wise. So we get to the recommendation of this committee to recommend Holmes Murphy for insurance consultant for this year. You'll notice that there was a four-year rate guarantee in with their forty thousand dollar a year annual fee. And then they've also placed a six percent cap on year five. If there was an increase in year five, it would be capped at six percent. Of course, that's assuming that we continue with a throughout the whole five-year period. And we can use now, we don't have an insurance consultant, now we've been in our consultant phase since 2012. It, it wasn't necessarily a freeze, the insurance consultant that we had at that time left the county. And we had some discussion, and it was the decision at that time to, to go and function consultant. I've been doing the RFPs and evaluations with the insurance world, the way it is these days with healthcare reform and, and everything that's happening there, all the changes. with healthcare reform and, and everything that's happening there, all the changes. I brought to the commissioners' court during budget to go out for RFP for the consultant, which is... So, we have that now.
So, this will be net news for us quite soon, right?
Yes.
And how much is in your budget line item?
Right now, Carrie, we're at the bottom twenty-eight, but we're coming in mid-year. And Holmes Murphy bills on Monday, so it's, so we should be okay on that for this year. And then, next year, we'll have to budget for forty thousand, but it will be well worth, service well worth, but that was all.
Okay. I saw Holmes Murphy and Gallagher came in really closely, and so, you got down to number four, the burn qualifications, fee costs, stayaway qualifications. Where, what was the difference? What was that tipping point difference?
The, the main tipping point at, at that juncture was the fee. There was a significant difference in the cost for Gallagher and for Holmes Murphy. Gallagher, I believe, came in at six, seventy-five thousand, and there was many points in the Gallagher's bill, but were they sixty-five? I've gotta look back there, I can work.
Because I can believe, it was actually fifty, fifty thousand is what they gave me. Because they have an extra fee.
But they had many value added costs. A lot of the things that we would be looking for in an insurance consultant would come in at an additional cost with Gallagher. So, not only was the baseline cost more, the cost for such things as assisting with opening enrollment and doing the RFP evaluations, those kind of things, would come in at an additional cost. And so, because of that, that was the ultimate tipping point on that particular line item.
So, Holmes Murphy, their fee model is more flat?
It's a flat fee, the forty thousand, and it covers everything that will...
Even their visits.
Even their visits, yes, there's no provision, there's, there's no travel expenses.
Where are they located?
They're out of Dallas. They also handle City of Amaral and City of Tampa, so they're in this area quite frequently already. I did check records on all five respondents, and I'm excellent on records on Holmes Murphy.
And do you think that we'll need a consultant for the five to six-year period? Or do you think we just need them as we look to, you know, every, every couple of years? I'm just a little unsure about the duration, how long we need this.
In my opinion, it'll be an ongoing need. They will do a lot in assisting with the day-to-day questions, claims, problems, those kind of things that will bring up the human resource office staff greatly over the...
Yeah, saving a lot of incidents, and we want to meet that.
And slightly.
We anticipate that they will save us more money, it's gonna cost us.
Yes.
English class.
Yeah, but that's, they kind of have to afford their other groups they work for.
I just don't know, sometimes when we're the ones doing the work, like, not the court, obviously, you're, you're a team doing the work. I don't know that more, you realize that kind of cost savings, right? A lot of times, if you're coming with another consultant to another role in it, but then taking off of their daily workload, they'll just move to other things, right, to other demands of the office.
What they'll do is look at cost-saving strategies with regard to our structure of our schedule of benefits, or look at wellness strategies and those kinds of things that will be very tangible.
They have big pictures of time.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I'd like to add that they did come with some really good references locally, and just both of them are top two, but the references on this top line that we're recommending is very, very highly recommended.
Anything budget-wise, Carrie? I believe it'll be only double this year. Just kind of...
Number two, approve the submitted recommendation of award contract for the health insurance to...
Motion and second on favor, Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, hard-coming projects, we didn't think of mine, but had, it's federal, it's a report.
Good morning, Carrie. I was gonna tell you that our remodel of our station number two is proceeding very well. We're basically almost done. There's a door that's coming in in the next couple of days to be installed. And we finished with the first part of it. The second part of our project is we're gonna tear down the whole building. And we've got a person in the valley that offered handout for us, at no cost, and all the materials. So, we'll be getting that started hopefully in the near future.
When you say a person in the valley, what's that mean?
It's one of the original.
The, that's a song, that's a song for us.
No.
That one, okay.
Not if you're...
And you said you're gonna get materials for that counter, are you making those purchases?
No, they, they want the materials, so they're just gonna tear it down. It's gonna be, our two choices for the tear, our choice is gonna be that we'd have Rockbridge coming out and tear it down and haul it to the dome. And he wanted what's there, so he can tear it down, and he thinks he sees good. Saves us a lot, saves the county a lot. I think, bring Rockbridge, haul a little bit of trash off, I love it.
Sounds good. Thank you. I'm all too bad, I'm wrong, last name, I'm wrong, so sorry.
It's okay. He looks like a Pittsburgher.
General report today, it's about a hundred and fifty-four people in the jail, seventy-one of those are females, none other than children, eighty-two percent are felons and eighteen percent are minors. Who have insurance, I can...
No, we do not. We have no executive session agenda items for next time.
We have a briefing in the court, and we...
Before we all leave, I have one public service announcement, right? For about the tenth time now, the doors to the courthouse were left unlocked at some point. Okay, this morning, seven o'clock, they were wide open, the hallway was dark. We have got to be better. Anybody who offices in this building, please tell your employees, if they come to work, and we're doing, please lock the doors, and this is a safety hazard, big time, do it, big time. So, just reiterate that, okay? The door was unlocked.
So...
Again, have them... Okay, Mr....
Not a good one.
Yeah. Okay. Anyway, just a quick thing, I know we were thinking for government day, to have a quick meeting for those on that committee, just writing the convention. Okay? We are, nothing else, thank you very much.